All right, we'll call convene the December seventh, two thousand, or December fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, meeting of the Ascension Parish Zoning Commission. All members are present except for Mr. Foster, who is traveling tonight. And we'll move on to item number three on the agenda, the acceptance of the minutes of the November ninth, two thousand sixteen, meeting. Do I have a motion regarding that? So moved by Mr. Bishop, second.
Second.
By Mr. Christie, all in favor.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. Item was number, item number four is the chairman's comments, which I made my comments in the planning meeting. Item number five, a public hearing to amend the Ascension Parish Land Development Code for Recommendation for Approval or Denial to the Ascension Parish Council, five A zoning review ID PZ eleven forty-one point one six, tract eight of the remaining portion of tract H of the Harry Boyon property for OU FNAC construction located on the west side of Louisiana Highway seventy-three, approximately three hundred feet north of White Road to amend the Ascension Parish zoning map for medium intensity residential RM to mixed use two MU two. Someone here on that tonight? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Amber Morian. I'm the Realtor for, representing the potential purchaser of the lot, who is requesting to rezone it from residential to MU two.
They're gonna put a church on that, is that?
No. It is an industrial, commercial, sales business.
I see.
They're currently on O'Neill Lane in Baton Rouge. They have, it's a re, it's not a retail sales office, and their hours are Monday through Friday, from seven thirty to four. They have fifteen employees, of which three are in the office.
That one, you too.
I'm sorry.
What kind of business is it?
It's an industrial, commercial, sales. It's Belzona is the name of it.
Staff?
Staff recommends to deny the MU two district as requested. Uses allowed in MU two district are not compatible with surrounding areas, which it's a single family surrounding.
All right, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Has anybody signed up to speak on this, Ms. Patrice?
No, sir.
And we'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions from the commission? So, there's no, there's no, and I know we've had conversations about this, I think, a little bit farther north on.
Further north, and a little further south also, yes, sir.
Yeah, there's no, there's no commercial area zoned in this area seventy-three?
No, sir, not in this, this area.
It's all residential?
All residential.
This is the accurate zoning map?
That's correct, yes, sir.
With the color on it?
Yes.
It says on your application that you're gonna be doing warehouse storage and supplies on the facility, is that correct?
Right, it'll be an office building and a warehouse that's built in the same facility.
The warehouse is gonna be in the same building, or it's a separate?
It will be attached. So the office will be the frontage of the building, and it would, the warehouse will be in the back.
Is there mixed use lands at all on seventy-three? Between airline and the interstate?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Did you know?
Not, no, not, not mixed use. There's a mixed use two that's a little further south.
Right.
Of the property, and.
On seventy-three?
On seventy-three, yes, sir.
How far south is that mixed use two coming?
Twenty-five hundred feet.
Isn't that the, the corner of Longwood, isn't that right?
Yeah.
Looks like fourteen hundred feet south and twenty-five hundred feet north.
What's at that corner of Lottie Henderson and Longwood? I don't remember.
But that's actually further south.
That's south, yeah.
Yes.
Is that the fourteen hundred feet?
Fourteen hundred feet is gonna be where Longwood comes into.
Right. What's there, what's?
Nothing's there right now.
It's vacant lot.
It's vacant property.
How did that get MU two?
Uh, they petitioned for it, and it was rezoned.
Did, did that come before us?
No, sir, that was before you.
Okay, all right.
They, when that came through, Lance, remember, that was gonna be a dentist office?
I think so, it was a professional office, what it was.
It was a dentist or something like that. But it didn't, it didn't have a significant impact.
But now they can put, somebody can buy that lot and put anything that complies with mixed use two on it, right in the middle of all the residential.
That's correct.
Which is the hazard of granting the rezones right smack in the middle of residential.
Yes, sir.
Correct, and you cannot condition a rezoning.
Which is the issue we've had at the last, I think, three.
Correct.
Meetings, which included some on very similar stretches of seventy-three right here.
Yes, sir, correct.
And I think we denied all of it.
But it, but we get, I mean, and I, certainly, that's, that's all accurate, but it's not residential, going south, it's not residential all the way to.
The interstate?
The interstate.
No, sir, no.
To the firehouse.
No, the, there's, yeah, there's the, the fire department, and then south of that, we approved some, some spuds in there also, just a recent, one with the, I wanted to put a, a doggy daycare in one, and then then, when you, as you go further south, where easily Malonsong is, there's an industrial type park there.
I mean, I, my dilemma on this is, if you look at this, I think it's a clear example of a term I hate, but I think it is, spot zoning, but at the same time, the, you know, the reality is that there's not a lot of residential growth going along seventy-three. I think that's just gonna eventually dwindle out and make it rezone, unless somebody builds a subdivision, make it rezone anyway.
From a timing perspective, it's, it's not there, but I agree with you, sometime in the future.
I think it's gonna get.
That will become a corridor.
I think it's gonna get rezoned anyway, because that's a commer, that, it is, in fact, now a commercial corridor, even though there are still residences out there, other than, you know, Longwood subdivision or Seven Oaks, there's all the subdivisions there, but not, there's not many people left living on seventy-three, so.
So, as far as rezoning that narrow stretch of the corridor, how would that work? Would somebody have to go to the parish to, like, is that a re, because you'd have to rezone an entire, that entire?
Yeah, I would think that it would, it would be just that. It would look at the area, maybe an area that they would look at to, to rezone, and I, you know, the road has been widened and, and that type of thing, and there's a, you know, it's a, going from.
Yeah.
The airline to, to the interstate. But I think what may happen is, it's gonna go possibly more of, maybe from the interstate moving up, or maybe going from airline and moving down, not starting in the middle and then working your way back and forth.
Well, right, well, doing it this way with the spot zone, and it's the issue.
Yes, sir.
And this is the third time we've had one like this in the last few months.
Yes.
But it's cert, like, they're saying it certainly seems to be going that way.
Yes.
So either rezone it, I guess, or look at rezoning it.
Ultimately, ultimately, it's the council, because whatever we do, you know, we can recommend approval or denial all day long, if the council wants to give them the zoning, you know, we can't, we certainly can't stop that. I, I just think we're, we're running, the, the law might be a little bit behind on, or the zoning map might be a little bit behind on the realities and the practicalities of the situation, so that would, that would favor and argue in me, argue to me in favor of, of granting this, or approving, recommending the zoning change to the council, but I don't get to vote, so.
But we've denied two recently for the exact same issue.
We've denied to recommend.
Well, denied to recommend, yes.
I, I'm just, I might as well just say what we're all thinking, that is, and for lack of a comprehensive land use map that looks towards the future, we really don't have a guide as to what to do here. So unfortunately, given the current condition of how we've seventy-three in our past experience, we would be, in my opinion, erring to do what we think we should do.
Well, and I made the comment, comment earlier, my comments earlier went to the legislative province to fix these problems, not our province, and so that is a well-taken point, that if it doesn't work one way, it doesn't work the other way.
Precisely.
Yeah, and, and I, and that is a virtually impossible argument to go against.
Correct.
So, all right, do we have a motion on that, then?
I, I just think that due to the timing and, and the incompatibility with current land use, and the lack of a future land use map, I, I don't think we have a choice but to recommend denial, recommend denial of the, of the request.
All right, so we have a motion to recommend denial. Do we have a second on that?
One second.
Second, a motion by Mr. Dumas, second by Mr. Dudley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none. So, your argument's not over, because unlike planning, we're not the final authority on this, it's ultimately the council's decision, so our recommendation is what it is, though.
So what's the appropriate, you know, next step in terms of what?
I believe that this will be on the parish council's agenda at their next regular meeting, with a, a recommendation of denial of the zoning change from this body. Now, that's a recommendation that is as valid as the paper that it's written on, so.
Right.
You know, I would talk to the, the elected officials in that area and, and make your case to them, because I think if they would want it done, it'll get done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, item five B, public hearing to amend the Ascension Parish Development Code for Recommendation for Approval or Denial to the Ascension Parish Council, five B zoning review ID PZ eleven forty-two point one six, tract A Charles L. Tyler property, and tract B Estelle B Guidry tract for Lake Ascension LLC, located on the east side of Eads Road, approximately twelve hundred feet south of Highway six twenty-one, to amend the Ascension Parish zoning map for medium intense, medium intensity residential RM to mixed use corridor MU. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good to see you again.
My name's Bill Wood Smith. I've been holding this property since nineteen ninety-nine, and I think it's time to get y'all's help in getting this rezoned. Of course, I've met with Lance over the years, and Lance always comes back with the old, this is RM, or the people next door, non-conforming use, but let me show you what I got on my mind tonight. I brought this map here, that's on the television up here. The property that I have, that I'm requesting the rezone, and the reason for requesting rezone is I just want it to be compatible with my neighbors, okay? I've got, there's a veterinarian clinic on the corner, that is zone commercial, there is Austin Fire and Equipment System next door to that, that is like a major industrial, heavy industrial type usage. Then there's an office, very nice office building with warehouse and outbuildings behind it, on my adjoining property owner, my, the adjoining property. Then I have this property, and then I have that lake, and then I have the property on the other side of this property. And if you look at that map I have up on the board, I purchased most all of the property from the corner of six twenty-one, all the way down almost to Landry's Road, Landry Road, and I did a very nice subdivision there called Lakes of Ascension Crossing. And I went across the street down Eads Road and did what we call Lakes of Ascension LLC, that's another eighty lot development, and I'm basically a residential developer, so RM property is normally right up my alley. This particular property, if I was gonna, wanted to build homesites, or it was in, the best place for homesites, I would've built those a long time ago.
Why is it not?
Well, just the way it's shaped, the adjoining properties are not residential, they're commercial, and, so, you know, I would like, in the event y'all are not familiar with this site, I'd like for you to ask for a deferral, if you think you need to ride by it. I've got a very pretty little presentation I wanna show you on the television right here, to show you that this property, for the health, safety, and welfare of the community, is a much better site for commercial mixed use zoning than most any property on seventy-three or six twenty-one, and I do have the most adequate roadways to support this type of zoning, being seventy-three, six twenty-one, a major frontage road, Eads Road, dead on I-ten. So, Chris, can you turn on my, my little show? Right here is just a outline of the intersection, showing you the major roadways. Go to the next one. This is, uh, the entrance to Eads Road at six twenty-one. Eads Road is a heavy-duty industrial type of basically a service road. There you got Austin Fire and Equipment, don't go so fast. You got, that's, that's the entrance there, and then next, this is a, a shot of the veterinarian clinic. Go to the next one. This is a coming down Eads Road, you see this road, there's only eighty homesites at the end of this road, which the subdivision is probably about fifteen hundred to two thousand feet or more from what you're looking at there. And then you have Austin Fire Systems, then that's a nice commercial building that butts up to me. Next, behind that, this owner has several big commercial warehouses and outbuildings. This is an aerial view of the site, it's certainly not a residential site, as you can see. I actually built and backed up with a street called Mindy Way in Forest Lawn, backed up to what was called Byron Valve and Equipment, uh, years back, and those were my toughest lots to sell, because they backed up to this facility. Then Hurricane Katrina came, and luckily, a builder came and took them all, but the homes are not as nice on that little section as most of the other. Go to the next one. This is another overhead shot, and right now you can see you're getting to my property. Go ahead, Chris. Here's a little video, we're coming in from, this is turning off of, right off the interstate. This is, this little piece is a section that the state owns, where they stage pieces for interstate equipment. Here you come, turn into Eads Road, you have the veterinarian clinic on the left. There's Austin Fire and Equipment, which is a massive building, you'll see it better when we come back down the road. This is the property, uh, next to me, the commercial building, and now we're right over my tract that I would like for you guys to rezone. I am the adjoining property owners, with the exception of the inner, and my, I have There's the site from the high, where you see that's right on the interstate off-ramp. I mean, if I cut the trees, you're like interstate frontage. That's the site on the right, and we're heading back up toward six twenty-one. Literally, Eads Road on six, to get to seventy-three, it's less than a hundred feet, once you get to the stop sign up here and turn left. So as far as all the, based on y'all's own definition, the districts are located in areas where the road system is the most capable of supporting growth with minimum risk to public safety. So it's much safer to turn on Eads Road and then pull into this property than turning in anywhere else. And it should be clock concentrated or clustered, okay? Unlike the spot zoning, commercial development should be clustered or concentrated at strategic sites in relation to the population centers, other commercial sites, and adequate roads. I'm the adjoining property owners, with the exception of one of the lots at the end of my little square, uh, along the skinny part of the lake, but between that lot and the homeowner's lot, I do have a force main, which is a sewer gadget that ships this, the sewage to my treatment plant in the, uh, other subdivision across the lake, so it's not like, there is somewhat of a little buffer of a sewer plant that you can't just mow over. And, like I say, this is the first step. I need y'all's vote to get to council, and all I want is to zone it, so it'll be compatible with the adjoining properties.
Staff?
Staff recommends to deny the mixed use quarters requested, proposed uses that are allowed in the requested zoning, would not be compatible to the area, and existing commercial uses surrounding the property are considered non-conforming.
That's the story of my life, I've heard that forever.
What, what classification would have to be on Eads Road for the pre-existing businesses to be conforming?
Mixed use.
Uh, with the, the, some of them would possibly have to be either, uh, medium or light industrial, possibly with the storage, I don't know what they storing there, so I'm not sure. I know for sure.
I don't think they store much, I understand.
Okay, then probably mixed use, yes.
Would mixed use accom, accommodate Austin?
I would think so, yes.
But, are we not to consider that because they're pre-existing?
Yes, sir.
Uh.
And that's not being requested either.
But that's not fair to, to the property owner.
So, let me ask you a question, Lance. Have you guys thought about, you know, in the past, the staff has looked at an area like this and said, you know what, we should take an opportunity to clean this up, reach out to the adjacent property owners and see if they, if they wanna come in and actually do something that makes sense.
We've done that in the past.
Yeah, we, we, this was up last time, and there was neighbors from the subdivision that came in to speak.
Yes.
And I, last time you were.
Oh, you mean me, two months ago?
Yeah.
And Mr. Dumas, you weren't here.
Right.
And.
I know it was up recently before.
I had worked, and I don't know if there's, we're, I don't know if the public meeting's still open or not, and I don't know if there's anyone here to talk about this project. Is there anyone signed up? Okay.
We have not opened a public hearing yet.
I, I have, I work with my neighbors, as y'all know, I deferred three or four times in order to get to the point, I have the, the president of the, and their attorney with me at the last meeting, we communicate, uh.
No, and I, I think that's the, that's, I mean, this is, I know this was up before, it's before, and I think the upshot of, I don't remember what they, what he was asking for before.
Well, I was asking for, but it was quote, "spot zoning," because.
Was it, hold on, was it mixed use the last time?
Yeah, it was mixed use, but the property was further south than this, it's not the same property that you're requesting.
It was the.
It was the entrance to that subdivision, almost lot.
Yeah, it was at the entrance.
Right, okay.
And I'm the buffer of all of this, so they say it's not conforming, well, single family's not conforming to me with what's next door.
This is the property adjacent to the property you hear?
No, sir, this is the property up the street, right near Highway six twenty-one, right next to Austin Fire and Equipment, and, you know, it's, it's perfect for a commercial site, I mean, you can't get a better site, especially if you're looking at the safety and drainage and traffic, there's only eighty lots in the neighborhood.
I wanna, I wanna ask two questions. The last time this was up, it was discussed that he was on eight, five, E and D was up the last time, two months ago, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And we discussed that he could put a trailer park there, and I know you gave thought to that, but you didn't, uh.
You could put mobile, you could put one dwelling per lot of records.
I could put four mobile homes, and I didn't want to.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get that. Um, and the same would be, you could only get one mobile home on each of these lots that he's looking at, that we're looking at.
Yes, correct, he can only put one dwelling per lot.
One dwelling. But if we rezoned, if we recommended and it got rezoned as mixed use, it would basically turn it into commercial property.
Yes, sir.
And you have the buffer here between the, uh, these other lots, between these land and where the, the subdivision, the lakeside, the ski side, whatever.
Yes.
Correct.
Now, let me ask you this, Lance, if, uh, if Eads Road were zoned, I'm gonna try to account for the businesses that were there, would it be mixed use?
I would see.
Or could it be mixed use?
It could be mixed use.
So what we have, the reason this isn't zoned as mixed use is because these are pre-existing, non-conforming uses for this property.
Correct, yes.
But the reality is, and correct me if I'm wrong, the chances of putting a new subdivision on this piece of property is pretty slim.
I can answer that. The, the other thing that you have to realize, well, the other thing is, is that you have to realize that the dead end of this road is an eighty lot residential subdivision.
No, I, I, I understand that, I'm, but they're, they, they're going through a commercial area already.
To get there.
Yes.
To get there.
Well, yes, that there's limitations of what they can do on the property.
I, I get, well, I guess what I'm, what I'm seeing here is, we have what is a de facto mixed use zoned area because of the pre-existing, non-conforming use from six twenty-one down to his property. Theoretically, that if we rezone this as mixed use as the map looks today, it would be spot zoning as the maps laid out, but not in practi, not in reality, because it's really spot zoning now to not let him develop, at least this small piece of property here bef, before the subdivision.
Except there are two potential issues with that.
Yes.
One is, those other properties, if they go out of business, then have to revert back to the correct.
They would revert back.
That's one, the second one is, by rezoning this, then all of a sudden, A five, E, D, C, B, A, that we denied last time are now adjacent to it.
No, they're not, they're not adjacent to it.
There's property that's, that's on the south of that, there's property on the north of it would be. The other thing that you have to realize also is that, you know, and I don't know what Bill would, remember, once that you rezonate, whatever's allowed in that MU two district is permitted.
If I may, yeah, but Lance, Express was done before zoning, if my memory serves me right, Express has been there for a while.
Yes, sir.
And those, those lots, you know, B one, B two, B three, B four, and five, it's all of those were subdivided with intent of being commercial use. We never picked it up.
No, sir.
I know that, on, I know that on a couple of times, some prior, this, in, in my position here in a prior time, we talked about cleaning this up, and we failed to do that, we, for whatever reason, that effort died.
I, I would think that is because of the residential that's surrounded it. I don't know if it, if it died or not, I have no idea.
Is there, is the, let me ask you, the residential that surrounds it, um, I guess to the, the lakeside, the Lakes of Ascension that face six twenty-one, is that, is that divided, is there a fence in there that divides those properties from the commercials?
Absolutely.
Of, of six-foot privacy fence?
Absolutely, and the subdivision, this is just a little bitty part of one lot. The subdivision already backs up to those two adjacent property owners.
You don't have to go through Eads Road to get into that adjacent subdivision.
Absolutely not, they don't even know, look, there's no one even goes down Eads Road, except the eighty people and the people that go to these two businesses. It's a huge, big stretch of land that's sitting there dormant, and it's a perfect site for mixed use. And you know, then they always say, well, we're not sure what you're gonna do. I'll go spend a fortune to talk about doing a spud or a pud, and they come out like hornets to attack me, okay? And I don't even get to this meeting, okay? So, in order for me to be able to plan something intelligent on the property, I have to have the zoning, I'm putting the cart before the horse. Okay, so in order for me to be able to plan something intelligent on the property, I have to have the zoning. I'm putting the cart before the horse. Because I've already done it the other way. And of course, this is very expensive to, to draw plans and so on and so forth. And if you look at any other exit ramp off of I ten. Going toward Baton Rouge or toward New Orleans, every time you get off on the ramp on the right, it's not houses, it's commercial.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna.
And across the street and all the surrounding continuous property owners, to me, you take the interstate away. I'm right dead in the middle of all the commercial.
I, I would, I would have to speculate.
Let, let, let me, let, let, let me get back on track procedurally. I do wanna open a public hearing on this. Is anybody signed up to speak, Ms. Patrice? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Now I'll give you back.
Ma'am, somebody raising their hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Does somebody wanna speak on that? Come forward ma'am. I'll, I'll, I'll allow you to be heard on this, um, if you, if you would, sir. And you have three minutes, ma'am, please.
I'm Carrie Graves, one, three, five, eight, four, Lakeway Drive. I am the president of the HOA of Lakes of Ascension Crossing.
That's the, which, is that the six twenty-one or off?
Six twenty-one. So no, we don't go down Eads at all, um, but the subdivisions that he wants to build this around. The issue is not Eads, the issue is the lake that both of those neighborhoods share. And, and the property is lakefront property. Um, he argued that if you took the trees out of the way, no one would wanna buy it because, um. Because of the noise of the interstate. But if you drive down the road, he's also built this huge mound, so it, it's got a lot of protection there. It's, the illustration is not up anymore, but it's a lot of lakefront property. And yes, there are als, also always, I'm, I'm sorry, already those two businesses. That back up to Mindy Way in our subdivision, and I am constantly dealing with the fallout. Of those businesses being so close to the homes in our subdivision.
What fallout is that? Cause I think one is a, they're, they're like some kind of construct, it's mostly an office. I don't think they do.
It's just unsightly, um.
Is there a fence though?
There is a fence. Uh, we've had to bend the restrictions that he put in place when he built the subdivision. To allow our residents to build their fences higher because the buildings are so tall. And putting something else construction right there, especially on the lakefront, directly on the lakefront, would just be detrimental to home values. In both of the subdivisions, um. As it stands now, because of the trailers he's put in front on six twenty-one, um, and those two businesses. The lake is really the biggest selling point for both of those subdivisions, I would say.
Let me ask her a question. Let me, let me ask you a question. The, the folks that live in, in lots. Sixty-five through ninety-two.
Will you show me the map? I'm sorry, uh.
That would be, um, it kinda goes up the red line. Behind it, starts in the, at the lake and kinda goes up the red line and then turns left.
The ones that are, that are here and here that butt up against vacant land.
I'm sorry, I can't see.
Uh, the street's not labeled here. I guess.
Mindy Way.
Well, yeah, Mindy Way would be lots ninety-two through eighty-four.
No, no, this is ski side.
Ski side, yeah.
Ski side.
Mindy Way, yeah, it comes out and runs, comes out along six twenty-one.
Between, between ski side and Mindy Way and along Mindy Way where there's vacant land. Those lots, sixty-five through eighty-four and then onto ninety-two.
Slalom Way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they, they're about today vacant land. What do they think's gonna happen on that land?
Well, I think, I think, before you answer that question, um, B four, five, B four, B five, B six, B seven, B nine and B eight. Are they part of the non-conforming use?
Yes.
According to the aerial, what I see, no. There's nothing on it, then they're vacant pieces of property that are not part of the property.
So, can either of those businesses expand into those lots?
No. Not if they're being, not being utilized by something prior to zoning. And, and looking at the arrow, it looks like there's nothing on it, but I don't wanna say anything until I would actually go out to the site.
Right.
So the, the, are we considering both, both, cause I have one that's kinda X through and then one with red lines here. We're considering both pieces?
Yeah, you're considering, uh, the track that's lower end, the, the one that's outlined in yellow, that's the property.
Why is it demarcated differently?
Because that lot has not been separated at, at the time of when I, um. Drew them or did the map and there's, I can't, I can, but it, it takes a while to split that property up, so I went ahead and just did it by hand.
Okay, I'm sorry. You can go ahead, ma'am.
I mean, that's basically all I had.
Okay. Did you have, did you get your question?
Well, no, I mean, to answer my question, the thought is, is that. Everybody's, everybody thinks of that. I mean, their, their perception is that that's just part of that development. You follow me? And, and, and the thought that Ex, Express is gonna be, one day that rear part is gonna be residential, it's never gonna be residential, never gonna work.
Not, not unless Aus, Austin is cleaned out totally.
Right.
And same with the PCE group constructors. They'd have to.
They'd have to move.
Demolish their, what they have there. I mean, I don't see how you can develop B four, five, six, seven, eight, nine right now. I don't think.
Well, you can't see it on this.
Cause then there, there's no access to those lots.
There's prob, there's an access servitude that they would have along that property to get to those lots.
I mean, it kinda looks like there's a little, if you follow this right along the line, I mean, it looks like there's a.
There's, there's gonna be an access servitude on the, on the plat or on the, on the map. Yeah, it's just not built.
There's a private servitude of access to those lots. That subdivision predated zoning and it was created way back when. I mean, we struggled with it one.
But it's kinda the same issue as the one we just had, right?
No, not really.
I mean, I, I see the different issue in here. Being that, that Eads Road is de facto mixed use right now. Because, it just is, because of these pre-existing properties. So. Putting in, making that property mixed use, I don't think it would be that non-conforming, except for the fact. That once Austin and PCE close their doors, there's no more, that de facto mixed use goes away.
Well, they could sell that building to another business. It can continue so long as it's continually occupied.
As long as the use continues.
Right.
But they couldn't change the use, I'm sorry?
Yeah, they can change the use.
They, they would know if they, yeah.
The vet clinic couldn't sell and become a grocery store?
No, no, that they can't.
The, the vet clinic is, is in a mixed use district already, so it's a conforming.
Yeah, that's, we can't, that's, it's, it's the Austin Fire Company and, and a contracting business.
But, but they could, they could sell and be something totally different?
Nope. They gotta continue the same, similar use.
Okay.
But that, but that construction company is an office building. So that office building can continue to be an office building. It could be an architectural firm, it could be a, a lot of other different types of offices.
Which, which is agreeable, I would think. I can't speak for everyone, but the homeowners. Because we're already putting up with that. You make the whole thing mixed use, we have no idea what we're gonna get ever within the other.
Because we can't put conditions on.
Right.
Where we make it mixed use for this purpose.
Exactly. If you rezon the whole street. I mean, you say it's already mixed use, but.
Well, it is, but it's not.
It's so small.
No, I know. I've been back there. I, I go back there often.
And, and if you look, you can't see it on this map, but directly across the long side of the lake, there is a single homeowner.
Yes.
So, that's, it's not like no one would want to buy that land for a single home. It's less profitable for the current owner. But absolutely, out here, he could find someone to buy it.
It's, it's a, it's a conundrum for sure, because what we have here is. Property that's, in essence, looks commercial, is being taken out of commercial, it's been taken out of commercial use for that purposes. And in the meantime, the, the, these two subdivisions have, have grown around it to. To make it, the, the transition back to commercial really more difficult than. It's a tough question, okay. Yes, you can. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your, your comments.
Correct me if I'm wrong Lance, but I understand the property of right around B, B three or B four. Just put a new warehouse. If this is non-conforming, and I understand. Earlier tonight, that I thought you could use so much percentage of the property for non-confuse, conforming use, and I may be incorrect. But with that being said, I know there's a new warehouse been built there within the last two years at the longest. And the lake makes this property beautiful. She's exactly right. And they live on the lake and they get to look at it, but it's my lake, okay? So if I wanna put a fence up all the way around the entire lake. I have land on each side of the water's edge to put a fence up, so they won't have to look at whatever I put there. Okay? This is a beautiful piece of property. The lake is what makes it so attractive. For an office building or for whatever I would decide that would be the best thing for this piece of property. Any other questions, I'll be happy to address them, but this won't have any effect on anyone in Lakes of Ascension Crossing. Cause you have to go up, down six twenty-one to get there. You'd never drive by this site.
Are you on the lake, you on?
I own the entire lake and at least ten or twenty feet around the edge, depending on what part of the link we're on. Because I have a ski club and we ski on the lake. And I wanted to make, to maintain control of the lake. And with owning it, there's a lot of responsibilities that come along with it.
All right, any other comments by the commission or, or motion on this?
My, my quandary is, is that, again, I'm, I'm still stuck in that. You know, you, you wanna, you wanna zone this little parcel of it, and there's this large tract of land between you and the rest of the mixed use. And, um, I would really prefer for staff to. To look at this whole area, because if in fact, we, they, you know, we issued a permit to build a warehouse in lot B three or B four.
Well, there's a warehouse in B three for sure.
Right, so, I mean, if we've in fact done that in the last couple of years.
That's correct.
Well, you know, to me, there's a presumption that someone's thinking of that parcel of land, and I think we need to take a look at that and possibly have. Possibly look as, as to where the appropriate boundary of the mixed use should be and how much of, of.
Well, and if you want me, I'll be happy to take it upon myself to go meet with the property owners and get them to come apply for zoning, and we can do them all three together.
Yes, sir.
The owner of, um, track, well, I guess track A.
Track A.
No, uh, yeah, track A, he called, and his main concern is that he doesn't want residential encroachment actually coming on him. High, I'm talking about high density. That's what he's talking about, not, not that part, but high density. Trailer park, um, apartments, um, those type of things, or those type of uses.
He, he must not be too concerned, because he's not here and he's, I, I talk to those people all the time.
And I will say that an employee of that owner reached out to me, um, concerning that sort of issue. I don't think you could put a trailer park there if we rezoned it as mixed use or not.
No, sir.
And, and no apartment complex?
Yeah, you could put a apartment complex.
You could put a apartment complex.
Quick question Lance. So if we rezone this, then A five E is adjacent, so then that could be rezoned. Because it's not spot zoning at that point, because it's adjacent, and then A five D. And then C, B, and then the pieces across the street, because that would be, not be considered spot zoning, cause it's just a street that runs through them. Am I right about that or wrong?
It could be.
You're, you're incorrect in one statement, is we can't rezone anything.
Well, no, no, if, if it is rezoned.
And I think that's, and I just wanna, I know I keep saying it, but it's important for this issue, because. We're having a, a vigorous debate about this and there's a lot of, a lot of.
We're not the ones who make the final decision.
We are not the final authority on this, and it's been my experience. The council is not necessarily gonna give one iota of what we think.
Right. I need y'all's help to, to make it to the final round.
What I'm saying is whether we, whether we give you the help or not may make zero difference.
Well, it certainly helps in my book, okay?
Well, I think there was one we recently denied that the council approved, so.
Well, I feel, I'm not into the politics, so I'm not in their, their room.
Would not, would not fall under the definition, albeit a very loose definition, of what spot zoning is, simply because the property. To the north of it is a non-conforming that is in commercial use. So, you know, if you're gonna look at just, uh, what spot zoning is, you, you have to go beyond the zoning and look at uses.
But I'm thinking more along the lines of the property he was here about last time, which is, was spot zoning. If you rezone this, that buffer's gone, then all of a sudden, you can rezone that because.
It's not though, Mr. Chasson. There is still a buffer.
Frank, frankly, I think the critical part is, is I think that this area should be looked upon, because I think two things. I think we need to look at cleaning up this, this non-conforming uses. Identify where the appropriate boundary is and then ratify that that is the boundary. Or, or whatever the zoning is gonna be. Several years ago, that's what happened at this area. You know, and, and that was defined, that is gonna be the boundary for the foreseeable future.
All right, so what are we gonna do, John?
Look, how do you go about doing that?
I'd like to, I like. I, I would suggest, I would ask you to defer thirty days and ask staff to look into this, at the possibility of initiating a, a. An app, a more broader application to look at this and see what the appropriate zoning for that area is.
I'll be happy to defer. Can I help the staff? And I'd like to know what the process in the next thirty days is, because. I've done this before and deferred and delayed, and everything fell on deaf ears, and I have no problem. Like I said, I, y'all, y'all can go ride by it and look, this is commercial, it's the best site in town. It's got the best roads, and it's the safest place to turn into, with the exception that some fool. If they came to whatever was out there, they fell in the water, they might drown. But that would be the same with a, a home site.
I think, I think the, the, the question is, and, and Mr. Dumas can correct me if I'm wrong, is, is that. There may be agreeance that that piece of property is actually mixed use, and we might be willing to recommend that, but the question is, how far does that mixed use. Corridor extend down Eads Road, because there is a subdivision that we have to take into account.
Believe me, I'm very aware of, and I'll be happy to defer as long as we, I can meet Lance tomorrow and start working on this plan.
I think what we're looking for is, is some guidance from staff to look at this in, in. Taking into consideration everything we discussed here tonight, to see, is, is this really suitable for mixed use, this whole corridor there? And, and the other landowners, I'd like to hear from them too, if, if possible, if they're willing to, to do that.
The, the, the commercial users?
Yes.
Would you rec, would you want, like me to get them to apply for zoning?
Well, I think that what you need to do is get with staff and, and let staff, because it may very well be that they can, they can facilitate some of that help for you. But I think you need to get with staff and see from, you know, what, what their professional recommendation is and how to go about that. I mean, there's some non-conforming uses there that. You know, we need to, we need to look at and see whether we should clean that up or not.
I mean, and I thi, I think one of the, your compelling arguments is, I'm not aware of any service road, and I don't know that this is technically a service road that has a. I mean, I'm sure they exist, but has, usually you don't see subdivisions off a service road.
Oh, you, you got it. This is the best commercial site in town, and I'll be happy to get with Lance as soon as he tells me to be there.
So Cody, he needs to ask for a deferral, correct?
He needs to ask for the referral and then we need to go ahead and vote to grant the deferral till next month.
Based on y'all's recommendation that I get with staff. I mean, I don't really know what me and Lance are gonna meet about. He's telling me it's R M every time I go meet with him. I'll be happy to meet with him.
And ju, and just so you understand, any changes that may, it's gonna have to go through council anyway.
I understand.
Referring is just coming back here to maybe get a recommendation from them, send it back to council, but council's gonna have to make the ultimate decision no matter what.
I understand.
Just wanna make sure you're aware that in thirty days, all we can do is get them to reconsider their recommendation and that's it.
Right, but as Mr. Dumas has suggested, that I get with staff, and I ha, I'll be happy to do that. I just need some guidance from staff.
Sure, but I guess what I want you to understand is that staff can give you guidance, but the ultimate decision as to the guidance that they can give you, whether it can be done or not, is gonna have to be determined by the parish council. Staff can't tell you that they can definitely do this to change. Staff can tell you that they can definitely do this to change the zone.
And I, and I think he's been pretty clear about what he'd like to see, hear from Stan about this.
I move to defer, as per your request.
So, I, I guess the thing is, is we'll get it on the agenda as, as soon as we can. I don't want to promise him that, that, you know, meeting with everybody, that it's gonna be done, and we still gonna have time to meet our public notice requirement, so that's on-
And, and it could be, well, be the next month, you're gonna be here and says, and, and say, "No, we don't have a plan, we need to move forward," or you might say, "Yes, we've got a plan, and this is a schedule we'd like to follow."
Okay.
It could, it could be anything like that, correct?
So you need to ask us for the deferral.
I request, I request the deferral, as per y'all's-
All right, so we have a request for a deferral. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the deferral? Mr. Dumas?
Said, yes, sir.
Second by, second by Mr. Bishop? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any in opposition? Here none, motion passes. We'll see you in thirty days, hopefully. All right, uh, item number six on the agenda is a contract agreement zoning review ID PZ eleven forty-nine point one-six. Tract four P for Tadpole Academy, located on the west side of LA Highway seventy-three, Old Jefferson Highway, approximately six hundred feet south of Louisiana Highway forty-two, to request approval of a contract agreement. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jeff Loop with Quality Engineering, representing Tadpole Academy. Uh, the project is a five thousand, approximate five thousand square foot office bu- building, where they'll be doing swim lessons, uh, survival lessons is, is a part of that. It's a unique business that I think is a benefit to Ascension Parish and the surrounding areas. As far as the project goes itself, we've got the, the building, and then the associated parking and drives are all concrete. We performed a drainage impact study to limit the detention to pre-development condition. We're asking for your approval this evening. We've also done a traffic impact study that's, uh, been reviewed, and to my understanding, approved by the ERA.
Yes, sir. The use is permitted, so it's a, it's not a use, uh, it's a contract agreement which deals with traffic and drainage. So in that, underneath that contract, those issues need to be taken care of, and I defer any of those questions to Sean, who's reviewed the traffic and drainage studies.
Mr. Shiro?
They have satisfied Ascension Parish drainage ordinance and drainage study requirements. And, um, as stated, when it comes to traffic study, they were at the, only warranted, the lowest threshold for a traffic impact study policy was to analyze site distance, and they have actively addressed that requirement.
All right, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Has anybody signed up to speak? We'll close the public hearing on this. Any, uh, comments or questions from the commission?
What's the, maybe I'm just, what's the purpose of doing the, cause I know we're all asking this earlier. What's the contract review, like, what's the distinction here? What's the contract review? What are we actually approving?
You're approving the contract itself. So you're proving that, that, uh, all traffic and drainage, basically what happens in the contract, the contract refers back to the drainage and traffic, drainage and traffic, uh, study, and making sure that it met the requirements of Ascension Parish, and that's what you're doing.
But the use is permitted.
Yeah, the use is permitted. Where, if you go and you look in the zoning codes, certain uses and certain, uh, loaned properties require a contract agreement. It's different than a preliminary plat where they're coming in and dividing lots and everything, so it kind of puts those same requirements, but just on a single piece of property, requires a contract.
Right, and in those, in that contract, it's, it's dealing with traffic and drainage. Just a commercial school, and underneath the commercial school, a contract agreement is required. And it doesn't state if the commercial school is, you know, what size, it's just required. So that's what we're, that's what is here tonight, is to, to approve the contract.
You have a motion?
Approve.
Take it. Motion by Mr. Dumas, second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor? Any in opposition? Here none, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, staff report?
No report.
Good report.
Merry Christmas.
To adjourn.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to everybody. Y'all have a safe and wonderful new year.